Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners Work Session, Monday, April 4th, 2022. Mr. Township Manager, would you call the roll?
Commissioner D'Amelio.
Here.
Commissioner Forresty Grubb.
Here.
Commissioner McCloskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Mr. Wexler is absent. Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Chief, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and ladies and gentlemen, I ask you to remain standing.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America.
I wonder if we could just remain standing for a moment of silence. We lost, really, a great Haver Town resident, Jim Hunt, to a tragic shooting a little over a week ago. I got to know Jim pretty well, coaching his son for a couple of years. He's very well known, was very well-known at Brookline as Coach Hunso. A moment of silence here.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Our first item on the agenda is a presentation by Dunleavy Associates by Kathy Ullahan for CDPG Monies. I know that Ms. Ullahan had to go out to her car to get some of the materials, so I may jump ahead right now to Mr. Walco to discuss the policy considerations. Ms. Ullahan, whenever you are ready.
Sorry, Martha.
No, not at all. Let me just...
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kathy Ullahan from Dunleavy Associates. We do the work for your HUD-funded Community Development Block Grant Program. We do your applications and everything involved with it. We recently, because of HUD procurement rules, had to put a request for proposal out for professional services that are used for the program. And what that involved was engineering services for general engineering for the Community Development Block Grant Program, and then also for housing rehabilitation inspections for the Housing Rehab Program, the Title Search, also for the Housing Rehab Program, lead-based paint testing, also for the Housing Rehab Program, and then general consulting, which our office does, and consulting for the Housing Rehab Program. So we ran a public notice, did the RFP. We got four requests for the proposals, but we... No, I'm sorry. We got seven requests. We only received four responses. And the responses were from the people that have already been doing the work for years: our office, Philly Subsearch for Title Search work, LeadCo Environmental Services for the lead inspections, and Panoni for the general consulting and the rehab. So I had done an analysis. HUD has a point-based system that you score the applications when they're received. I did those scores, and I gave everything to Dave with a recommendation to hire Philly Subsearch, LeadCo, and Panoni. And then it's Dave's call on our... What else? I brought all the responses and everything. Everybody wants to see anything.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Ullahan?
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Next on our agenda is a... Is... Do I have the right agenda? Commissioner Committee Updates?
I have the right agenda.
Okay. The next on our agenda is Township Solicitor John Walco, addressing policy considerations for remote meeting participation by commissioners.
Thank you, President Holmes. I was asked by this board to review a potential policy regarding remote participation of this board for public meetings. This policy would be required under the First Class Township Code if remote participation is something that is desired. This policy is not directed at public participation. That would be a separate policy that would not be required, but would be good general practices to have. But this is aimed at more of just, you know, this Board of Commissioners at a public meeting, not a executive session, not a committee meeting, but at a public advertised meeting that's required to be made public, required for the public to be able to attend, participate in. If they didn't want to be physically present, but wanted to participate, whether it's via Zoom, via phone, some of the requirements are here as to how they'd be able to participate through telecommunications. This would be covered. As we remember, as of June of last year, meetings had to become in-person again. Prior to that time, during COVID, there was an emergency declaration that provided for the ability for the entirety of the board and the public to participate in a meeting through remote means. After that time, we went back to the old law. And the old law pursuant to Haverford's Charter, First Class Township Code, and the Sunshine Act says that you have to have an open meeting in person that the public can participate in, can come to and ask questions, make comments, be physically present. Currently, for First Class Township Codes, there is a requirement that there be a physical quorum or a majority of the board present in order for there to be a meeting where business is transacted or votes are taken. However, the remainder of those members that don't make up a quorum could participate through telecommunication means if a policy is adopted. This policy essentially follows the requirements of the First Class Township Code, with the exception of the item of when it would be justified. These are items that were provided, taken from the Borough Code, that the Borough Code deems as good reasons for a commissioner, or in that case, a council member, to not be at a meeting. Those being an illness or disability of a commissioner, care of the ill, or newborn in the commissioner's immediate family, an emergency, or family or business travel. So it's not just a, hey, I don't feel like coming to a meeting tonight. I'm just going to dial in. There should be a reason why you're not present here. Things can be added. Things can be taken out if that's not satisfactory. Again, that is not a legal requirement. There doesn't have to be a reason under the First Class Township Code, but it might be good practices for this board to limit the reasons for that. The second is to be able to provide notice if you anticipate that you're not going to be present. Illnesses happen pretty quickly. Emergencies happen pretty quickly, so you may not be able to give five or 10 days notice. However, if it is family or business travel, or if you know ahead of time that you're not going to be present, it helps to be able to notify the township, whether it be the board president or the manager. And this policy says to let the manager know, so we can make sure that there is a quorum present. Because God forbid that everyone decides to take off because of an illness, and then you don't have a quorum present, you can't have a meeting. So this would be a way of guaranteeing that we have that quorum. It's proposed that no more than three commissioners shall be able to participate virtually. That kind of gives you some wiggle room, so there ideally would be, you know, at least five, which is what you need to have that quorum here. The next is the requirement of how you must be able to participate. And essentially, it is what you would expect, that you can hear what's going on, that the public can hear you, and that the commissioner, other commissioners, can hear you. So there's full communication, just as if you were in the room. The fourth is to ensure that your participation is made known ahead of time. It needs to be coordinated with the township's Information Technologies Department. Now, this isn't as much of an issue as it is for commissioners as it would be for the public due to security issues, but it still is a need for township staff to ensure that we have the Zoom setup and the ability to participate. It isn't something that could happen just last minute. So the policy says that in order to properly facilitate, record, and secure that participation, that the IT department should be made known, and that they can arrange to make sure that the virtual meeting goes off, hopefully flawless. Oftentimes, in fact, a meeting or so ago, we did have some members of the public participate via Zoom on a select item for a presentation. Again, that is more of a controlled use that could come under this policy. But again, it's not necessary because it isn't a requirement under the First Class Township Code. There are some other requirements that are thrown in there. Again, it would take 30 days in order for a policy to be changed to be effective. That's a requirement of the code. We want to provide some wiggle room, just in case there is another disaster emergency, that we know that this wouldn't overrule that emergency. And again, we have the idea that we would like to, at some point, make future policies for the public for virtual attendance. That's a much broader discussion, a more complicated discussion, because it involves dealings with staff regarding how to facilitate when they participate, who is going to do that, and more importantly, the security of that participation. As long as the public is still able to come into a meeting, there's more leeway for the board to say, you know, we don't have to leave it open for everybody, because they always have the option to come to the meeting. So there would be potential options of pre-registering or allowing someone to know, you know, the address for better security. So that is the policy. Again, it's a pretty basic policy. Majority of it follows the law of what it needs to be done. But in order to allow this as an option, there does have to be a policy enacted. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Walco, should we... As a policy, should we indicate that there's maybe an outer limit of the number of meetings that a commissioner can end virtually?
You're more than welcome to do that, if that's a concern. Again, if particularly for the idea of family or business travel, you may want to limit that, if possible. The idea is if you... It's better to be here virtually than not be here at all. And if you feel that it's being abused, or it could be taking abuse of, yes, I think we certainly want to take a limit on that.
Yeah, and I don't want to give the wrong impression. It's not that I'm as concerned about it being abused as I'm concerned about the public's perception of commissioners' commitments to this job. And so I think it's important for us to get as much participation as possible. But at the same time, I do think there is validity to the notion that the public sees us here, expects us to be here two Mondays a month. And for some folks, I think, being able to get up and speak directly to the commissioners as opposed to on screens, I think is important. So I, without trying to say that, you know, this is something we strongly discourage, I would like us to state, remind everybody in the policy that the commissioners are committed to being the public face of the township and being publicly available to the members of the public. And we recognize, regardless of this policy, the importance of being physically present.
Yes.
To speak on behalf of any of my colleagues, I don't know if folks agree or think I'm overdoing it.
I'm not sure why that would be necessary. I mean, a commissioner could just, if we didn't have the policy, could just not come to the meetings. I mean, nobody's done that in the, you know, in the history that I know of that stopped coming to meetings. What's the difference? It would be better for them to at least be on the Zoom than to not be here at all. I'm not sure. I mean, I would be fine. If somebody has an extended illness, they're going to miss. Are we going to amend the policy? We could always just put it in, enact it as it is. And if it's being abused, change it. It doesn't, it's... Takes a simple...
Well, again, my emphasis there isn't about the abuse. I guess my point there is the concern about public perception. But I mean, let's see how the public reacts. Let's see what kind of feedback we get. We're talking about it now. We have a public meeting next week. When people do get to speak, we may very well hear some comments about it, positive and negative. I appreciate your point. And you're right. I've been here and haven't seen the concern that I'm raising, so it just may be fanciful on my part. Does anybody have any other comments or questions for Mr. Walco or for anybody?
I was just going to comment that, I mean, I think that concern is addressed by just making it permitted for four specific items: illness, care for ill or newborn, emergency or family or business travel. The only one that I could see being played with a little is maybe that family and business travel. But overall, commissioners respect the fact that we're going to be here. The only thing I could say is maybe want to add a "where at" clause to say, you know, we... I don't know how you want to emphasize it, like, super strongly encourage that they be present, but...
Like, if you're at the shore and just don't feel like I'm coming home, you can't use that as an excuse, because we've all would want to use that as an excuse, but we can't. So that's one that I agree with.
Well, and a "where at" provision that you described, Commissioner Trombetta, where it isn't, it's just that we recognize the value of appearing in public and that the and recognize the public's perception that this is, that we be here, and we be transparent, and we do things in front of folks. So let's think, see if you can come up with some "where at" provision that accomplishes that without looking like us just being scolds at each other. And let's consider it next week.
If you were away and there's a pom-pom-pom tree in back you, I think then people might start to get mad.
I'll put up my fake backdrop.
Yeah, although I'm just going to... The alternative is commissioners do go away and miss meetings because of vacation. And if they're willing on vacation to join the meeting and represent their ward, I think we should be allowing that to happen.
It should be allowed. It should be allowed. Why would we hinder that? Why would we prevent that?
Yeah, and I don't... Yeah, I'm not suggesting that we don't allow that. I just... And you know what? What I'll do is, since I'm not the public, I'll stop talking for the public. Let's just see if we get any feedback from folks who have concerns at all about the notion of us participating virtually.
And certainly, it's very easy to provide additional language to show the emphasis on the desire to be here for the public without changing the policy. So I can certainly add that language. The other thing I would like to note is that it's not like the commissioner's going to have to come at the next meeting and say, I was caring for...
Bring a note.
Right. I mean, it is sort of a honor system. It isn't something that you would have to answer to the public about, well, what's your illness? What's your disability?
Well, it's a HIPAA violation anyway. Why would...
Right. So that's why I want to make sure it was known, that that isn't something you're going to have to announce if you do miss a meeting.
Right.
Or Larry could say something in the beginning, once the roll is called, that one of us is not here because we're away because of a death or a war, like, or something. And then that's all. You don't even have to...
Well, I assume we'll do, I mean, we're sitting at a roll call.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll do, yeah.
Then you would explain, like, something like, he's excused, or he or she is excused for...
I don't even know. Can you, John, even say that he's out to, or she's out to an extended illness? Or is that even...
I think we just leave it to our commissioners. Again, I think we've gone back and forth about this up here now. We've given the public an opportunity to see what our different considerations are. Let's see if we get any feedback. You're right, Commissioner Hart. All things being equal, more participation than less is a good idea. I agree with you. I do note that 245 years of our federal government and no senator or representative can do anything other than vote in person. And same with the General Assembly. So it is an unusual step. And it's, but it may very well be in the post-pandemic world that we're just slightly ahead of the rest of the world in doing this. So I get it. Unless anybody else has any other thoughts, let's move on to the Historic Resources Survey. And so I'll now move to the Historic Resources Survey. Who has this?
I suppose I do.
Okay.
Mr. Holmes, the, so as the board is aware, the zoning ordinance includes a section for historic preservation, and that's to protect the historic resources in the township in the interest of protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the community. So in the ordinance establishes a clear process for review of any potential changes to the list of historic resources. Includes additions, deletions. It also includes demolition of historic resources. And it provides a set of standards for which demolitions may be permitted by the township. So why am I telling you this? Well, the township has two properties currently on the historic resources inventory that are of concern. The first one is 1744 Vermont Road. And that property, the structure itself, is in conflict with a layout of a proposed trail extension along the Darby Creek. And so I need to present that to the Board of Commissioners, so you're aware that we have this potential conflict. And at some point, we may be looking for direction from the Board of Commissioners on whether that structure may be removed or considered for removal from the list of historic resources or potentially permitted for demolition. And so it's something that should be considered carefully by the Board of Commissioners. The second property that I want to bring to your attention is called the Powell House, and that's at the public works yard. And that is an old residential house, one of the earliest structures in the township. And we budgeted this year $150,000 for replacement of the roof. And what we've learned as we started to look at that property with Panoni is that there are some serious structural concerns with that house. Structural concerns that are very, very costly, could be very costly. So again, that's something that I need to bring to the Board of Commissioners to your attention, so that you're aware that we do need some direction from the board on both of those. And I present that this evening as a discussion item, in case the board would like to weigh in on that.
So by way of background, the Historic Survey is what, the Historic Survey is something that we adopted, I don't know, 12 years ago when we adopted our Historic Relations Ordinance, and then adopted the survey as it had been created by the Historic Commission back then. Is that right?
I don't know exactly when it was established, but I can tell you that the list of historic resources dates to the early 90s, I believe. And it was prepared, I think, by Delaware County. I think Kelly Kirk may have a little bit to add on that.
I do. The original Resource Survey was compiled by the Delaware County Planning Commission in 1994. We adopted the survey in 98, and then created the Anti-Demolition Ordinance that we have now in 2009. There's been a few changes since then. When we originally adopted the ordinance, there were a few properties that were recommended to be removed from the survey. More recently, we've adopted, I think it was three or four properties. So this would be an amendment to the survey.
And remind me, this is, there is a, is there a formal process? Do we, as a township, have to go to Historic Commission and seek permission to demolish these properties?
Our ordinance does require that the properties receive a recommendation from the Historical Commission before going to the Board of Commissioners for final approval. That goes for any property, regardless of whether it's counterproperty or a private property owner. That is the procedure that's set in the ordinance.
So we have not exempted ourselves from this procedure, but we remain the ultimate decision-maker on this after the Historic Commission gives us a recommendation?
Correct.
Well, hopefully, we do the right thing, huh, folks? Right? That's what we want to do here?
Kelly, just a question. And besides the Historical Commission, is there anybody else? Is there any Delaware County?
It depends on which procedure we want to go with. There are kind of two different options here. An amendment to the survey itself, which is what we recently went through, which is essentially a zoning amendment, and going through it that way, which would require a 247 application, which goes to the Delaware County Planning Commission. Or if we follow the procedure that's in our ordinance for demolition of historic resource, it wouldn't necessarily go through that procedure, but probably is a little bit cleaner to do it by ordinance instead of just by recommendation and resolution.
And if I understand, the process that we're... The goal here is to go through the process of removing these two properties from the survey. Is that what the township would like to do, Mr. Berman?
I think the, if the Board of Commissioners wishes to consider the demolition of either one or both of those properties or those structures, I think the cleanest way to do it is probably to remove them from the inventory, or consider removing them from the inventory. It's probably the least costly way of accomplishing that objective, if indeed the board decides to go in that direction.
Do you need, all right, so do we need formal board action next week to start the process of either removal from the resource survey or permission to demolish or otherwise alter the properties?
So we do not need a formal action of the Board of Commissioners. The idea here is that we're discussing it. We're making everybody aware of it. And unless there are objections that I feel from the board, we would proceed with either one of those avenues and see comment from the Historic Commission and either the Planning Commission or the County Planning Commission, or both. So I don't know if the board wants to discuss that further this evening.
But ultimately, then, after those processes, then it would come back to the board for...
That is correct. In either case, in either process, there would be a public hearing before the Board of Commissioners for either one or both properties.
The public hearing is after the Historic Commission makes its decision?
After the Historic Commission offers their recommendation and comment, there would be a public hearing before the Board of Commissioners. That is correct.
And no matter what the Historic Commission, whether they go along with the request to remove from the survey, or whether they object to the request for the survey, our board still must act and still must have a public hearing. Is that right?
Absolutely.
Okay. And it would be my recommendation, unless I hear a strong dissent otherwise, that you should start, the township should start taking the steps necessary to put the proper people on notice to remove these two properties from the survey.
Thank you.
And if it's possible next week to report to us what that, what those steps are and an anticipated timeline for that, that would be great.
Yes, sir.
The very first thing would be to get it before, or get the proposal before the Historical Commission. Their next meeting is on, I believe, April 18th. Although, no, that's Easter Monday, which we are open for, so they should, it should be, should be the correct meeting date. And there is a 10-day requirement for surrounding properties. So if we are going to be doing that, I would have to get notice out shortly. But we can certainly start that process, get everything before the Historical Commission, hopefully by their April 18th meeting. And then potentially at the earliest, but I'd have to do some math about deadlines. May 2nd probably won't work for the public hearing. Probably June.
Well, can we hold the public meeting before our May, before our regular meeting?
Why don't we just get through the Historical Commission before planning the public hearing?
Sure.
Right?
We will need to do a resolution for the public hearing, anyway.
Well, let's rule nothing out. I know the township wants to act, so if it's, if there is a timeline within which we must notice a public hearing, but we could always not go through with it, I would prefer that we not rule out the May regularly scheduled meeting. If things proceed apace, if they do not, we can postpone it until June. I just don't want anybody on May 9th... I just don't want anybody on May 9th to say, why didn't we do this tonight? Okay? That sound like a plan?
Would you like to do a resolution for the public hearing by next week?
Out of the corner of my eye, I'm seeing a, the international sign for no way, so.
Right, so that's why I do think we might, we may need a little bit more time, and I think, I think June would be more appropriate of a timeline.
It's always lovely that time of year. Excellent, all right. Would anybody else like to communicate verbally or non-verbally to me on this issue before we move on? Excellent. The next thing is, and does anybody else have anything else to say on the Historic Resources Survey? We will now move on to Commissioner Committee updates. I will start with Commissioner Forresty Grubb. I know that Commissioner Forresty Grubb has some information about library.
Yes, thank you. So last Thursday, March 31st at 6:00 PM, the Commissioners Library Committee met. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the economic benefits of investing in our library now and in the future. That is, I'm glad I'm giving this report during this week because this week marks the beginning of National Library Week, where 120,000 libraries across the country celebrate libraries, library workers, and promote library use. In addition to returning to in-person programming, the Haverford Township Library is holding several very special events this week for the community. There are two pop-up events, one on Wednesday at 9:30 at the New Avenue Cafe in the Kelly Center, where anyone who comes can browse and check out books, sign up for a library card, and attend a storytime. There's another pop-up event at House Cup Coffee on Thursday at 8:00 AM, where along with your morning cup of coffee, you can get another book to read and also a sign up for a library card. The library is also holding a stuffed animals sleepover for the children this Friday to Saturday, which is a huge amount of fun because the kids drop their stuffed animals off and the stuffed animals get up, get up to all kinds of mischief in the library and pictures are posted on social media. The library also tries to make sure that the Haverford High School students are dressed in their best, in, in the best way possible by hosting a prom dress and suit exchange. So anyone who would like to donate formal wear through May 13th can do so. And then the students come and choose a dress or a suit to wear for prom. So that's, that's just a few of the things that our library does for us. And, and now that they are offering in-person programming, they've been doing so much to keep us engaged in meeting our neighbors. In addition, the Commissioners Library Committee discussed the return on investment for the township's monies that we give to support the library, which is the busiest in Delaware County. Our township invests 1.2 million in the operating expenses each year for the library. And this number represents approximately 2.5% of the township budget. Just to give you a sense of what that gets our, our residents, in 2019, people borrowed 327,000 items. If each of those items were valued at $9.15, and I'll explain where that number came from. That's almost $3 million of circulated items per year for the library. The item value of $9.15, $9.15 derives from a study done for Minnesota Public Libraries in 2011. In that particular study, each item was valued at $7.48, which was adjusted for inflation to $9.15. So when we support the library's operations by 1.2 million, that generates $3 million worth of just items circulated for our community. In addition to this direct return on investment, libraries are economic generators for the communities they serve. And we discussed how in many communities, libraries anchor business corridors and generate more foot traffic to business than retail in the local proximity. Here are a couple examples. When the South Branch of Memphis Public Library moved to a large facility in a commercial strip, six out of the eight storefronts were vacant. Within four years, every storefront was completely full. Another example, closer to home in Western Pennsylvania, the Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh generated more than 91 million in combined economic output, which is pretty impressive. And still closer to home in Philadelphia, research showed that libraries are responsible for increasing home values in Philadelphia neighborhoods surrounding libraries by $698 million, which generates an additional $18.5 million in property tax to the city and the school district. Libraries also are terrific partners with local businesses to provide them with research and data so that they can formulate their best business plans. For example, according to a study for South Carolina Libraries, 49% of business users say that they obtain most of their business research information from the public library. Our Haverford Township Free Library partners with local businesses to improve their business plans. So for example, the library's annual business breakfast is notable for connecting, discover Haverford and businesses with elected and appointed officials. Before COVID, the business breakfast was held at the Y, but then was held at Steel Field during the pandemic. The library also provides lots of programs through SCORE, Business, Business Networking, Print and Digital Resources, and Meeting Spaces for, before COVID, 65 events serving over 1,500 people. So the library does a lot to support small business development and growth in the township. In summary, the members of the committee were again reminded why continued support of our Haverford Township Free Library is critical to building a strong community that promotes the local economy, serves the needs of residents of all ages, helps business owners promote their businesses, and sustains community groups. And so that is the end of our report.
Thank you, Commissioner Forresty Grubb. Anybody want to follow that up? Are there any other Commissioners who would like to report on their, on their committees at this point? I will now invite our Chief of Police to provide our police update.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, it's the monthly chief's report for the Police Department in March 2022. We had 19 criminal arrests, one juvenile arrest, 141 traffic citations were issued, 18 non-traffic citations, 202 written warnings, and 507 parking tickets. Got a burglary at Haverford College. Employees reported that a steward's room was broken into and plumbing supplies were stolen. 1232 West Chester Pike, McDonald's, reported $3,000 from the safe. Point of entry was the unlocked door, and detectives were investigating. They feel it's a former employee that did that job there. I'll go back to Mixer's Lounge at the very end for a full report on that. 1100 Block of West Chester Pike for a crash in front of Wells Fargo Bank for a DUI. The operator became combative during the arrest of struck officers. He was taken into custody. Theft from vehicle, 1400 Block Lawrence Road, which is Linwood School. A person reports that they were walking at the school. Somebody smashed their side window of their vehicle and removed the pocketbook. One bicycle theft from the Grange Field. We had six K-9 usages, 100 Block of Walnut Lane for a track after a possible attempt of burglary. 700 Block of Preston did a vacant property after the homeowner suspected possible burglary. 800 Block of Beechwood for possible burglary in progress. A person heard a noise downstairs. Sproll a new armboard to assist Marple Police for a narcotics sniff. Beaumont and Mortler Roads to assist Radner for pursuit, they pursued a stolen vehicle in a carjacking, and the vehicle was crashed. K-9 body did assist with the tracking the suspects with negative results. And then in Upland, K-9 Axle and Officer McDermott checked the interior of Main Street Elementary School after an open door and window was found. Commissioner had asked me to give an update on Mixer's Lounge and where we are at the present time. So I'll give you a quick history lesson on it. I'm sure everybody's aware of it, but I feel that it's important that you all hear where we have been since the spring of '21. Now, during this, we have worked with codes, worked with Kelly also because of the issues that we have. So Mixer's Lounge at 1254 West Chester Pike, which is the LNM building. So they moved in somewhere in the spring of '21. On 7/29/21, the police patrol found a large unruly crowd in the parking lot with 200 people and a fight, and then a gunshot. Then police received a report that a hospital in Wilmington called and said they had a gunshot victim. He didn't know where he was shot, but the last place he was was Mixer's Lounge. So 8/28, a large, a large party in the park, a large amount of people in the parking lot, about 11 o'clock, police dispersed them. Now, a lot of these calls, the police were finding them on patrol because of the problems we're having there. We're paying very close attention to it. On 9/18, over 300 people in the surrounding lots refused to leave. They had armed private security guards there, which also tried to assist, but it was a bit out of control. During this time, myself, Dave, and Deputy Chief Hagan, we met with the owner on a few occasions. We tried to come to some sort of agreement that she would hire detail officers to sit outside and not inside to try and keep peace with her patrons leaving. They were there for two or three times. I think it got too expensive for her and she stopped. And she owed us a fairly large amount of money, which has since been paid. So on 9/26, police were staging in the area because of a large crowd inside. Another fight started outside. Mace was dispersed by one of the combatives into a large crowd of females. And then it took some time to disperse them. Like I said, we met with, with the owner numerous times about the crowds beyond the capacity. I think the capacity was 99 people. Multiple times, she had over 200 or 300 people in the building. And the illegal sale of alcohol. So it's a, it's a BYOB restaurant where you could bring your own liquor in, then they would serve for you. So we contacted LCE. They made some buys up there, so we also did a raid up there two months ago. So on 10/23, a large fight where it was bad enough, where it's so out of control, the sergeant had to call surrounding police, police departments would insist officer bring multiple units and disperse the crowds. On 12/17, another fight, or one person had injuries to her face. They were fighting. The combatants, the rest of the combatants had left. She was there, she was taken to the hospital. On 2/19/22, a heavily intoxicated subject in the lot, which was arrested. Then on 3/18/21, at 2:00 in the morning, there was a detail officer there because we told her that she had to have a detail officer outside. This is when she owed us money, she come in and paid us that day. The officer was there. He was detailed till 2:00. At 2 minutes to 2, he called for help. He heard multiple gunshots outside. There was still a large crowd out in the parking lot behind McDonald's and in the Starbucks lot and the LNM 2 building, which is the building behind the LNM 1, which is the two-story building. Multiple police responded, I responded also, Deputy Chief was there. Everybody had left. One person was found with a gunshot wound to their ankle in the far corner of the building and next to the apartments behind McDonald's. She was taken to the hospital, and of course, there was no witnesses at all. After reviews of the multiple cameras from McDonald's, we, we saw what happened. Another fight started at the same time as the gunshots, right behind the building. So the massive people left the lot behind McDonald's, ran to the fight taking videos, and without, the shots started. So as detectives did some more investigation and, and, and found during the daylight, they found 28 rounds that were fired behind Logan Funeral Home, which is next to the LNM 2 building. So you saw two cars pull up, three subjects got out and ran in behind the funeral home, and the vehicles left and they went down the, one of the side streets. You see through the video, because it's very grainy and dark, obviously, weapons come out and you see multiple shots fired by three people. Indiscriminate shooting, just firing 28 rounds, and that's a lot of shots. Luckily, that fight started and it moved everybody from the parking lot. We probably would have had fatalities there, I'm sure. With that, that's where the comedy of errors start. The shooters run away. The two vehicles that dropped them off pull into the parking lot, start driving in circles looking for their posse, I guess you could say. With that, they stop, they talk. We have pictures of the vehicles, the colors, and we have a license plate, which, which we're getting enhanced now because of the grainy part and the, and the glow from the parking lot. It's been difficult. So through, through a lot of detective work, we, we have discovered that this was a retribution from some shooting in Chester where this person has ties to. They came up here for whatever reason to, I guess, start the war up here. So with that, that night, we went in. We told the proprietor that, I told her I was closing her business on an emergency basis until we contacted the township manager on Monday morning. I notified Dave that night. I said, I think I sent all of you an email also notifying you. And then from there, the process starts. So Dave, I don't know if you want to jump in here?
Yes, subsequently, we did issue the, the summary closure in detail, and it provided all the information that the chief has outlined. We've posted the property. We've notified both the landowner and the, the lessee or the tenant. And we have also revoked these took into occupancy. And, you know, there's a little bit more to it than that, but that's a summary of what we've taken, the action we've taken so far.
So we, we also had discussions with the, the landowner also, and they were very concerned. And they have been trying to do their due process to have that person evicted. But it's, it's a long process, as we well know, to try and get somebody off her property. But she's been closed since then, so we'll, we'll see what happens from here. So that's my report.
Chief, I would like to thank, thank you for all your hard, hard work on, on that. And because with the gun, gunshots, you don't know if it's straight, straight bullet, there's kids around, around there. So our hope is to keep this place out here.
We were very lucky that night, believe me.
Chief, 28 rounds, that sounds like comes from semi-automatics?
I, I think it's just probably handguns commissar with high-capacity magazines. Because you can see, you can see the, the flash on, on the weapons, so bang, 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 bang. So, you know, most large-capacity guns have about 15, 16 rounds. So I would assume that, that large-capacity magazines.
Chief? Earlier in your report, you referred to a purse snatching at Linwood on a broken window. And I just want to make sure I got the facts straight on that. Was the person in the car and their window was smashed and the purse was taken, or they came out of the car?
No, no, the car was left there. She was walking around the school. When she came back, she found a broken window.
I'm concerned that that was a confrontation.
Not an occupied vehicle.
Not an occupied vehicle, okay, thanks.
Has there been any more check, check incidents besides mine?
We have not had any reports, but I will say it again tonight for the public. If your mailing checks, especially it's the income tax season, take it to a post office and drop it off inside because we have had multiple reports since the last time I spoke to you. So, and we had a report also that someone in a vehicle stopped a, a mail carrier and offered him $5,000 for his key in the Haverford Township. So it's out there.
Five grand. Chief, and I didn't hear any reports this time, but we've, I still, I assume we're still dealing with catalytic converter thefts?
They have dropped off again, but I shouldn't have said that because I'm sure tonight we'll get whacked big time. So they have dropped, but they, they come and go, just like the car entries, they say they come and go.
I know that we had captured that you had apprehended somebody involved in this. Did that, has that worked its way through the system?
It's still, still in pipeline.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Commissioners.
At this point in the agenda, we just proceed through what is, what are our plans for next week? See if anybody has any particular comments or issues they want to discuss. Next week, we will be taking up the second reading of the Single Use Plastic Regulations. I know we have all received a lot of email traffic for and against and commenting on the plastic use regulations. I don't know if anybody has any comments to make tonight or whether they want to save those for next week. We will be doing the second reading of Traffic Ordinance Number P5 2022. We'll be doing the first reading of Pension Employee Benefits Amendments. These amendments are, are triggered by the most recent collective bargaining agreement. This we will act on these next week. And so I will save till next week. Ms. Cuthbertson, your description of these, we could we could expect that next week?
And just briefly, this date back to the police contract that went into effect in '21, and just some housekeeping language, cleaning it up.
Excellent, thank you. Parks and Recreation, we will be discussing the 3824 Darby Road Cook easement. It's first reading. Is there anybody who wants to?
Mr. President, this is a renewal. It's the Grace Trail, which leads into the reserve from Darby Road with the first easement, first lease for five years, and this is a renewal for an additional 10 years.
Oh, terrific, okay. The next, the we will then we move to resolutions. Resolution Number 2259 will be the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, TDI Planning Grant Application for a study, a Brinford Study. Is that anything we anybody would like to discuss this evening?
So the study that we are looking to fund has to do with traffic flow and pedestrian safety and takes into account some of the increased traffic we've had in the Brinford area. So we feel we have a good case, and I look forward to hearing more about it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cavender. Resolution 2260 is a reverse subdivision of Cathmer Road. But Mr. Quinn, anything to talk about there?
Explain that for me?
Sure can. In a lot of the older neighborhoods, lots were created in subdivisions that predate the zoning code. So there are existing lots that are very, very narrow and very, very small and don't meet the current zoning ordinance requirements to build on. So this is exactly that scenario. There are two existing lots that are not buildable the way that they are, but combined, they create a conforming lot. So they're just combining these two lots that are non-conforming, making a conforming lot and building one house. It's otherwise that land is otherwise non-developed or undeveloped at this point.
Thanks, Kelly.
And another resolution will be our establishment of a policy for the Board of Commissioners, remote participation in public meetings, which we spoke about ad nauseam. Anybody have anything else to say about that tonight? We will also be doing a contract, an award of a contract for the CDBG request for proposals. Obviously, we heard an excellent presentation on that earlier today. Public Works will be is seeking additional funds of $17,307 for purchase of an international cabin chassis for a full-size dump truck from Hunter International. That will be for $74,000. Oh, I'm sorry. The correct that that price is being corrected from a previous action of this board approving a $74,526 contract. That contract will be amended to add the correct price of $91,833. Also, next week, we will have a presentation, what I hope becomes at least a biannual event. District Attorney Jack Stolz timer will be coming to our township to talk with us about what's happening in the township. And I think we all know, and this is not private or executive privileged information, the District Attorney's Office not only is involved in in criminal cases and investigations, but also has significant civil practice. Our own township has been a party to various matters that the District Attorney has undertaken, and I look forward to his presentation to us and a good, long relationship. And finally, we will doing we will be approving a proclamation for the Haverford-Finland Ice Hockey Exchange. We're all looking forward to the arrival of our Finnish hockey players. That's almost redundant, right? Ice hockey players from Finland. And they will be participating in wonderful events from Thursday, the 14th, through Saturday, the 16th at the stadium. I encourage everybody to come out and watch. That will be not just the young Finland players, but our great own Haverford players as well. That is everything that is scheduled for next week's agenda. Something not on the item, but something all heavily on our minds is that this will be is scheduled to be the last meeting of our colleague, Commissioner D'Amelio. I look forward a week from now, Commissioner D'Amelio, to to your participation that day and for what I'm sure will be a great deal of fanfare and tears and some laughs and just an opportunity to send you off.
Thank you.
That with that, I will, unless anyone else has anything else to offer, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Granted. Thank you all. Good night.